Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if I could call this meeting of the Central 13J School Board to end the session, please. I'd like to explain the situation that we're in tonight. We have attending this meeting Chairman Steve Love, who's attending via Skype from Denver, Colorado. We have with us three board members here locally. We do have a couple of board members that are out ill and one that had an emergency trip to the hospital. So at this point in time, we do have a quorum, and we will proceed with the January meeting of the 13J School Board. So at this time, you could ask everyone to stand for the flags, Luke, or if you could do that for us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we look to get started, prior to getting started here in the January meeting, what would always, every year, January is an opportunity to recognize our board members. Excuse me, it is School Board Appreciation Month, and at this point in time, I'd like to read into the record for January is a proclamation from the Governor of the State of Oregon. Proclamation, whereas Oregonians rely on public education to ensure a prosperous quality of life and strong economic health for Oregon, and whereas locally elected boards fulfill leadership roles and serve as the conduit through which teachers, parents, businesses, and communities demonstrate the care, creativity, and support that lead to high-quality welcoming and inclusive learning environments for each Oregon student, and whereas public schools nurture and train diverse student populations to the best of their ability, whatever the resources, to give students the knowledge, skills, and aptitudes they need to succeed, and whereas board members build the frameworks that make it possible for education organizations to teach Oregon's children, and whereas the committed Oregon Oregonians who serve on the board of the state's 197 school districts, 19 educational service districts, and 17 community colleges deserve recognition and thanks for their dedication to the education needs of the people of Oregon. Now therefore, I, Kate Brown, Governor of the State of Oregon, hereby proclaim January 2017 to be School Board Recognition Month in Oregon, and encourage all Oregonians to join us in this observance. So ladies and gentlemen, please join me in thanking our school board members. Now moving forward, looking to the agenda, members of the board, there is only one change, and I'm aware of at this time, with the agenda that you were provided and with the agenda that's in your book, and that is, under Student Reports B, there will not be a Power Peers Report this evening. Other than that, the agenda is as is submitted. Looking at that, I would look now to our CHS Student Report, and if we would have the student come up and make the report, please. And since we do have Mr. Love on the phone, if you can be loud, and you're at the table there with the chair, if you just speak into that so he can hear you, okay?
Alright, so I'm Priscilla Diaz, and I'm from the student body. And so what we have is for this week, we have Bandeek starting on Friday night, and that Thursday night, and they'll be running Friday and Saturday. And their matinee is on Saturday, and it runs for two weekends. And then we have Snowball on the 28th of this month, and then also finals at the end of the week, at the last week of the month. And then FFA has a chapter meeting on Wednesday at 2:30, and an alumni meeting on Thursday at 7:00, and then creed and job interview competition on Friday.
Any questions? Thank you for your questions.
Thank you.
Now, of course, as you know, a couple of months ago, we had the FFA get ready to take their trip to Indianapolis, and they have made that trip, and they're here to make a report, too. They also have a little PowerPoint, too. So Lynn, you and your FFA colleagues, come up, I appreciate it.
Okay, so first off, I just wanted to apologize that it's taken us too much to get here. Both board meetings that we planned to come to ended up not being able to come to due to weather.
Alright.
Right here.
Okay. So to start it off, this is long enough. Okay. So to start it off, we had... What's up?
Mom.
Okay. So to start it off, we had two advisors, one parent chaperone, and two American, FFA American degree recipients, and we also had, I believe, five other students that came with us.
So in October, nearly 64,000 FFA members, I guess, cut from across the country. They come to Indianapolis, and they go to workshops to enhance their leadership skills, and there's many activities that you can do there. And so it reaches all the way from up to Maine, to Puerto Rico, and then from Alaska to... Alaska.
Hawaii.
Hawaii.
Okay. The FFA National Convention is a wonderful event, and it's one of the only things like it in our country. It's the only agricultural food science and natural resource education show, and it brings over 60,000 high schoolers in one area. And if you can just imagine that in the picture of like the energy that's flowing through, like it's just absolutely crazy. And on top of that, you have advisors and parent chaperones and anybody else who's involved in FFA. It's really just a crazy experience.
So for the sessions at National Convention, it allowed us to connect with all of the other members attending the convention. This provided our chapter the opportunity for us to cheer on our national FFA band and choir, and we had the chance to listen to our national officers present their experiences and listen to keynote speakers, as well as them presenting a variety of different educational and motivational, or motivating topics.
So the picture that's up right now is all of the Oregon FFA members that attended. We all got together, and we had all of our pictures taken, and after that, we kind of mingled around with each other and kind of talked about what we had done and what we'd learned.
So during our downtime, we had the opportunity to take a bunch of tours and adventures, and we had a bunch of places that we had gone to. One of them was the Shed Aquarium, the other was the Blue Springs Caverns, and another was Louisville Slugger Museum and Bat Factory, and the Churchill Downs Racetrack, and as well as the Kentucky Derby Museum.
So before our flight, it moved up 18 hours, and we had a two-hour notice to get to the school, and another like two hours to get to Portland. And so in the bottom right picture, you can see all of us waiting for our flight. And then in Denver, in Indianapolis, they actually had a screen print down on the floor welcoming all national FFA.
It made for an adventure getting there, because Brenda and I were at Fall Ag Teacher Conference that day when I got... I just so happened, all the other ag teachers that were down there with us, some are like, "Well, our flight was canceled. Have you checked your flight yet? Some of ours is going to move to the next morning." So we checked our flight, and we found out that we were supposed to be leaving at 7:00 that night, and we were in Sutherland, Oregon. It made for an adventure trying to get everybody rounded up to get their stuff packed, because we weren't supposed to leave till the following 2:00 a.m. the next day. It was great.
One of the places we visited was the Shed Aquarium, which is over in Chicago, and it was a hassle getting there, because it was... Who was it playing?
The Bears.
No, no. Chicago NFL Football Team, the Bears. They were playing the same day, so they shut down all roads around there, and it took us forever to get there. And we had the chance to go see a dolphin show and many other fawning animals.
So the next day, we ended up going to an underground cavern. You walked down 400 feet to get to it, and then you got in a boat, and we took a guided tour in the boat. We got to go all the way to the back as far as we could go, and we saw all the different animals that lived down in the cavern.
So the next part of our adventure all over the place was getting to go to the Louisville Slugger Museum and Factory. And while we were there, we got to take a tour of where the bats are made and how they are dyed and painted, and we got to see all kinds of different things, like bats that are signed by professional players and even wax figures of the professional players. And we ended up having a great time there. We each got our own little mini slugger, so it was really fun. Okay. And then we had the opportunity to go to Churchill Downs, and that was probably one of my personal favorites. We got to do a tour there as well, and they told us all about their great winning horses and all the legends who have ever stepped foot there. And when you walk out and you just see how massive the track is, it kind of puts it in perspective a little bit. And then you see videos on the internet and on TV, and you never really imagined that when you step out there, it's going to be that vast. It was really cool to get to see.
So next up was one of my favorites, and this was ice skating. This was my first time of ice skating. I don't know about these two, but we met up with our state FFA officers, our whole team, their whole team, and we all just kind of hung out and had fun. So that was a really great experience.
So one of the things that I kind of brought back from Indianapolis and all the workshops that I went to is to kind of open up my field of vision and who to talk to, who to get involved, different personalities that worked great with some of the different CDs, and just kind of how I can bring my social skills into kind of recruiting more into the FFA and trying to get it more school-wide and known to some of the other kids.
One of the things that I brought back from one of my workshops was that rural and small-town cities are slowly dying off due to all the development and everything, and it was really cool to see that FFA is one of the huge supporters of all these communities, so yeah.
Well, I learned a number of very important lessons that I continue to use in my everyday life, but probably one of the biggest things that stuck with me was one of my workshops called Women in Ag. And agriculture is a male-dominated field. Everybody kind of knows it. Most people don't really expect a woman to be a farmer, and so as a woman in ag, I found it really interesting to be able to sit down with three different professionals in their fields and really get to kind of hear their name about how they're able to keep their companies thriving and doing all of the work that they do. And I've been able to implement that myself in my own business and building my own products, and I'm thankful for that, because it really gave me the insight that I needed to continue moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michaela, I do have a question. You're watching me. That's not from ice skating, is it?
Oh, no, no, not from ice skating. I'm actually a competitive cheerleader, and I don't even have a cool story for it. I just did a jump and landed wrong, and I'm like three months in this boot, so it's awesome.
I would tell the board members, I've had the opportunity to go back to the National FFA meeting, and in my case, I got to go to Louisville. It wasn't in Indianapolis, but there were 55,000 best kids in the world. And so anytime that, and I know that I would imagine Brenda and Lynn would invite you, anytime that you could join and go back and see that it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, it's great. So thank you guys for making that report today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to, I have two comments, communications from the floor. Julie, do we have any communications? Having done, we'll move on. Is there a CEA report today?
Hi.
There we go.
Just gonna try to adjust this. Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Chrissy Eichelberger, and I work at IES. I just wanted to share a little bit about my story, and then I had another teacher write something also, just so that we can share a few minutes with you about our job. So I have worked at IES for 17 years, and I want to start by saying I love my job. I am the TOSA Teacher on Special Assignment at IES. I wear many hats while taking on this job, though I like to say that my number-one role is supporting students and staff. Mainly, I serve as a behavioral support, working closely with students and teachers. I also am the EL Coordinator. A large part of this role is directing Power Hour, our after-school program that works alongside Beyond the Bell. In Power Hour, we consistently have 30 4th and 5th grade students dedicating a little over an hour per afternoon, Monday through Thursday, to bettering their English language development. I am so proud of the students' commitment to the program, as well as to their individual improvement. I'm excited to see their growth in the coming months. I've been impressed with our staff's team-building this year, and I'd like to share one staff member's story. Can you hear me? Our 3rd grade PLC team had the opportunity to do a learning lab, where we observed each other teaching a lesson in each person's classroom, and then had a discussion afterwards. We used the Danielson evaluation to evaluate our teammates' lessons and give them constructive feedback. It was a great experience to see another teacher teaching and give us great insight into our own, as well as adding ideas to our teaching. In fact, I changed the way I was organizing my students for math instruction because of what I observed in another teacher's classroom. I moved from whole-group instruction to a more differentiated grouping to help my students to be more successful. I've also moved from using the unit of math booklets that were provided for the first unit to being almost paperless, as my students use their own math notebooks to complete the concept development and application problems, as well as a problem set practice during guided instruction. I also use free online math programs such as Prodigy, MobiMax, and Xern to support their learning in math and for home practice. I'm also very excited about the GLAD units. The students are able to remember and apply their learning in other learning areas in real-life situations. I believe the focus on integrated units and the learning strategies of using charts is really helping them to retain their learning, and it is showing in their post-test. I'm really impressed with the effort staff members at IES are making to build relationships with all staff, but especially new staff like myself. When we've had activities such as staff lunches during grade days or professional development days, the majority of the staff is there, and everyone is visiting each other and getting to know one another. And when we had our holiday winter dress-up days or just a regular school spirit day, our staff always does an awesome job of participating. As a new staff member to this district in IES, I am very excited about all the wonderful things that are happening in the district and at IES, and I'm very optimistic about our future as a team and the success for students. So I wanted to kind of share, in 17 years, to a new teacher in our building, very happy, very successful. Coming with the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy. At this point in time, we did see our auditors come in. There she goes, snuck in and stayed in the hall. So Cease, if you want to introduce our friends from both Carolina.
Thank you, and the board members. I would like to introduce you Jennifer Darst, in her second year as auditor of the team. She brought a team of auditors. They spent some time with us in September. At the end of September, we started work on parts of our audit. They then returned in November and spent untold hours preparing the schedules, confirming back and forth with us, making sure that we all understand the information correctly, and once again, gave us some really good insights into potential ways to improve our accounting practices. And Jennifer will share with you the other results that she has found, and you need to know as our governing body.
I think you all should have received a set of letters.
Jen, with Mr. Love online, we need you to really, kind of, there you go.
Got to push that, there it is.
Just get it closer to him.
A little closer towards it. Okay. So you should have received by mail a copy of letters that we sent to the governing body, and one of those was communications over significant deficiencies and/or material weaknesses that would have been identified through our audit process of internal control. And then we send the paper copies, so hopefully those have been distributed to you. I'm not going to go over every page of this. I'm going to do some highlights, I think, and then you can ask questions if you have them. So just for reference, the table of contents kind of shows the different sections of how we prepare the financial statements. So the introductory section is actually a letter that is prepared by Cease and Buzz, and that is not something that we audit, that there's some information in there that's pulled from the financial statements, and then just some other information that they share with the governing body and citizens of the district. So that section is management's responsibility. The financial section starts with our audit report, and our audit report is on pages A through C. Our auditor's report is over the basic financial statements, which is pages 1 through 6 of the financial statement package, and then the notes to the financial statements. So the notes give you a little bit of clarifying information, dive a little bit deeper into some of the numbers that are in the financial statements. After the notes follows the combining and individual fund statements, and those are how the district appropriates their funds. So each of the appropriation funds has a budget-to-actual statement, basically a balance sheet, and a statement of revenues and expenditures. So those are statements that are in the back, and those are in relation, we don't give an opinion over each of those individual statements, but it's in relation to the statements at the front. So there's also a section in there for the work we do over the grant compliance under the single audit. And so we'll just kind of go over our audit report from page A through C. So that report breaks out the responsibility of management, which is for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with the modified cash basis. So this district reports on a modified cash basis as opposed to GAAP basis. So these statements do not have receivables or liabilities that are for accounts payable or other long-term assets and liabilities. So our opinion is on a modified cash basis. And then our responsibility is to express an opinion on these statements based on the procedures that we conduct during our audit. So our opinion is that the financial statements referred to present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the governmental activities, which is the district as a whole. Each major fund, that's the general fund, the debt service fund, and then the aggregate other funds roll up to one opinion unit. So, and that's for the year ending June 30, 2016. And then we do a budget comparison for the general fund, which is also part of the basic financial statements. So we do draw attention to the fact that the basis of accounting is modified cash, because the general expectation is that they are prepared under GAAP basis, which is the generally accepted accounting procedures, that this is a modification that is allowed under Oregon law. And we have two other reports that are going to be in the back, and that's over the Oregon Minimum Standards, compliance with state regulations, and then our single audit reports. So. Page 1 is the statement of net position for the district, and that just shows the district's assets, and then it shows the liabilities there. Those accounts payable are related to cash transactions that happen during the payroll process, things like payroll withholding. So it's not for an unpaid invoice, the money that the district is holding to remit for benefits or other payroll-related items. So that's the only modification to cash basis. So those expenses are reflected, and the liability is on here because it hasn't been paid. So that leaves the net position of assets minus liabilities at 9.7 million for the district at the end of June 30, 2016. Second page is district-wide statement of activities, and that shows all of the revenues, all of the expenses paid, and it shows your beginning net position, and you have a change and increase in net position of 1.1 million for this year. So your net position went from 8.5 to 9.7 this year. Page 3 shows the different opinion units. This balance sheet is kind of now broken out by the funds that we're reporting on, and so we have general fund, debt service, and the non-major funds. Again, this fund balance down here shows restrictions, which are property taxes collected for debt that cannot be spent on any other purpose. And then there's other restricted fund balances in your non-major funds, and those are related to grant revenues that can only be spent on specific things, student activity funds, something where the revenue source has a restriction on them. The assignment are designations that are imposed by the district for how they intend to spend those funds. So that might be capital projects, buses, other things that have a designation of this is how we intend to spend it, but there's no regulatory obligation to spend it that way. It's just a district-imposed assignment. So, and then the unassigned is available for any purchase that is, you know, any expense of the district that's necessary. So page 4, again, is the receipts dispersments, and then other transfers between the societies are presented here by the opinion units. And then we have the general fund budget to actual. So during the year, I think the district had two budget modifications. Yeah, and so we show an original budget, which is what was approved and then adopted, and then the final budget shows the adjustments between the categories. And so there were no over expenditures during the year in the general fund because of the budget modifications that were made, that made sure that set appropriations were correct, that were necessary for what you needed to do in the district. So the next like 20 pages are the notes to the financial statements, and they have significant accounting policies. The things that I was going to point out are, page 15, are the long-term obligations. So that's the debt of the district, and it's not reflected as liability on the front pages because it's a long-term obligation, and so you budget for the cash payment each year, and that's how it's appropriated. But this does reflect all of the debt obligations of the district as of the end of the year. So this shows 78 million. This is not inclusive of any curves-related liability that you guys don't need to report on your financial statements because they're cash basis. So, but 78 million is based in the outstanding bonds, bus leases, and other pension obligation bonds that have been issued. And the other kind of relevant note that's not really, I've never reflected on the front positions, but is important, is on page 28, and that's the contracts payable. So because you report on cash basis and you pay payroll over a 12-month period of time, there's still some unpaid payroll that had been owed as of June 30, 16, so the balance of contracts for teachers that would be getting payment in July and August. And that amount is reflected here as 3.1 million. So of that 3.7 million, that 3.1 million was going to be paid out in the next two months for payroll-related obligations. So those are kind of, I think, the really relevant numbers that don't jump out at you on the financial statements at the front. We go to the back section here. Each of the funds, each of the appropriation funds has a budget-to-actual statement, and so there were no over expenditures that were noted in those either. And if there, there's also the combining fund statements, which is what rolls up to the front statement. So you can kind of tie those numbers out if you want to look at those a little bit closer. There's the special revenue fund, food services, those all... There's the special revenue fund, food services, those all roll up together to the non-major funds. So, and then the other section that's kind of relevant for what we have done is under Oregon Minimum Standards, we have certain sections, criteria that we look at to see that the district is complying with state regulations and those are related to different ORSs, like public purchasing requirements, if your investments are with qualified depositories, things like that. So we do some procedures over each of those areas and then that the only, so the district has to budget a reasonable amount for a beginning fund balance. If you budget too little, you have no way to have appropriation authority to spend those additional funds because you should have estimated reasonably. If you budget too high of a beginning fund balance, you have appropriation authority for money you'll never have. So we look at a reasonableness of that. It's a comment that is in here and it's in there with, it doesn't have a lot of weight to it, I'll say, because it's very difficult to know how much is going to be spent in student activity funds or what the timing of a specific, on a cash basis, like what the timing of a specific expense is going to be. But there is a pretty significant difference from the actual and the budget estimate for the special revenue fund. So it is noted in here under the minimum standards report. But everything else this year was, actually looked great in years past because of things with teacher experience where those had a lot of issues with that correct number of years being reported. And I know that the Human Resources Department really went through and did a major audit of those internally. So that, we didn't see any issues with this year, which was great. So, and budget preparation also this year. Cece and I went back and forth on that a little bit, what was correct and what wasn't because we look at your ensuing year's budget when we test the budget. We make sure that all of the required elements are there. And it turns out a couple of years ago, there were some errors, but this year was right. So we were like, well, wait a minute, this number is going to flow forward. So the next section is under the grant compliance. And so when we do our single audit, we have two reports that we issue. One is over the internal control over financial reporting. So that's over your financial statements and on compliance and other matters of the financial statements. And then the other report is on compliance for each major program that we've audited. So we had one finding that we considered a significant deficiency over financial reporting and you can see that on page 57. So as we were auditing payroll liability accounts, there's one pretty significant liability account, which is related to the insurance, the OEB, I believe, yeah. And it had not been, every time payroll is processed, it creates a liability based on elections that people have in place. But if they make changes or drop coverage, add a dependence, the actual expenses that are paid for that person's insurance may be different than what was processed for the liability. So that account hadn't been reconciled closely enough to have a number that was reasonable in our estimate. So we talked to Cece and she went through and I spent some hours going through and reconciling that, but we did have an audit adjustment that reduced the expenses that had been recorded by about $70,000. So that increased your net position, decreased the expenses, and that liability is actually more accurately stated now, which is on the front statements. But because that was a material adjustment, that ends up as a finding of an internal control over financial reporting. So Cece has addressed that through the management response and assigning that responsibility to somebody, I believe now, to do that on a more timely basis and definitely before we come out for audit. So, so that was the only, that was the only finding that we had over the financial reporting. When we did the single audit, we looked at the child nutrition program and at the 21st Century Grant. And so page 53 through 55 talk about the report on compliance for the major programs. This year is the first year that the single audit was performed under a new standard, under the uniform guidance. It used to be there were multiple compliance, compliance, I lost the word, OMB circulars, circulars that were required to be followed for different programs. So there was cost circulars and there were different things that grants required. So now there's this uniform guidance, which is supposed to apply to all federal funds and be much easier to understand. So that one of the requirements that is new under the uniform guidance is that anybody who has federal funds received has written documented processes in place to determine the allowability of costs. And so because this is the first year of implementation, that requirement was required to be in place on day one of the year. So the first federal dollar that you spend, you had to have those policies written and documented and in place. So the majority of, we do provide some insight to, you know, these are things coming down the road, but sometimes it takes a while for people to get all of the, all of the processes and policies in place. So I know Cece has been working on it for some of the other, for food service, but it wasn't in place overall federal funds to have that. So that's one of the compliance findings that's required to be reported. And that is noted on, oh, it's on page 58. So she's working on getting that in place. She sent something for us to give some feedback on and we'll be getting back to her this week to give you, I have some folk working on that.
Great, thank you.
And we have, I'll just say that there were no, there was nothing that we saw that was not allowable because those processes, because those procedures were not in place. It's just something we're required. It's a requirement and if it's not in place, we have to report on it. So, and then under the specific programs that we looked at, in the 21st Century Grant, we had a finding over, so this year there was an implementation that was more widespread, I think, over electronic time cards. And so the implementation of those time cards did not allow for the reporting, the breakout of people who are funded through multiple funding sources. So somebody who works under, partially under a grant fund and partially under a general fund, their time wasn't able to be tracked the way it needed to be under the uniform guidance. So we weren't able to see that it had been basically true to us, that the hours that they were charged to the grant were what they actually worked because the records weren't able to be kept that way. I think they turned a few things on in the module to make those changes and towards the end of the year, that was actually in place for most of the credit, but part of the year it wasn't. So that was one of the findings. And then the other was over the child nutrition. Couple of years ago, I think ODE did an onsite audit and then with that, some procedures were put in place to have some secondary review of applications and that all, those came out fine. And then that secondary review stopped as opposed to maybe just decreasing, you don't have to look at everyone, but somebody should still be monitoring to make sure that the correct, that somebody's looking at the criteria right, it's being entered correctly and having some internal control over the monitoring there. So like was, every single one was looked at in one year and then there was nobody looking at that secondary review. So we made a suggestion that there should be some limited, you know, secondary review, whether it's, you know, once a month, somebody's pulling a few applications and noting that monitoring function, just to make sure that the correct assessments are being made. So those were the findings that we had this year and so we didn't have any actual questions where there was anything that these funds should not have been charged to a program, there was incorrect determinations made, nothing that would, you know, result in ODE or the Department of Education coming back and asking for the money back or anything like that. So, and again, the general entries we made, we had that one large adjusting entry for the payroll liability and the others were just kind of reclassification between object codes, getting it in the right bucket of where it was going to show up in the financial statements, but nothing that was underreported, overstated. So, do I have any questions?
Steve is coming in. Do you have any questions, Steve and Jennifer?
Uh, no, I don't.
Any other board members? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Moving along on our agenda, we go to financial program reports appropriately after the audit reports. So Cece, the detailed financial.
Thank you. Thanks again, Jennifer, for your team and all the help. Appreciate it. So in your packet was our detailed report, revenue and expenditures, actuals, that means went through the end of December. As people were able to struggle in during the weather we've had, it's been an interesting time here in our office and with all the illness and stuff, we luckily got payrolls done and everything done by December 31st. So these numbers were pretty up to date. As usual, what I point out is where we are as a percentage of the year and on the revenue page, we have much more than 50% of our revenue in hand and that is because of the property taxes specifically. So in that case, we get most of those before December and that skews heavily in our percentage received. Our expenditures, we like to be at about 50% at the end of December and on the line called subtotal prior to reserves, we are at 48% of our expenditures planned. So we're in very good shape there. I would like to draw your attention to the line item 420, textbooks, and that shows rather a large over expenditure. That is because, and this happened to us last year, we did a budget transfer in June of last year, planning to make a large purchase of textbooks in June. They got their textbook order in and of course, not all of them came in June. So being on a cash basis, a lot of those books came and were paid for in July. So that's this current fiscal year. We didn't have those budgeted for this year, we had them budgeted for last year. So by not spending that money last year, we carried forward more than we had planned. That means our carry-in, our beginning fund balance is higher than it would have been if those bills had shown up when we expected. So we actually have the cash on hand to pay for these textbooks, it's just in the different line method. So next month, we will be having one of those supplemental budgets as we did last year to move that money from the beginning fund balance into this expenditure and it's literally just because of our cash basis of accounting. So that's not a concern that we've overspent, it's just that we need to increase the budget by that amount to cover what didn't get spent last year. And just interesting, while we're talking about those contingency funds, on the bottom of the expense page, a couple of things to point out. We have our operating contingency, of course, we don't plan to expend that. The curriculum contingency, we have drawn down quite a bit. Luckily, so far, excuse me, we have not had to dip into those maintenance reserves. I knock on wood, partially because of course with weather and things like that, we're experiencing a lot of repairs, but so far we have not dipped into those. We also have this year for the first time, a reserve called, or contingency called Class Insurance Savings Pool. And that was an item that was negotiated in our last contract with our classified staff that any money that is budgeted for health insurance that is not spent for that group only, right? So only for the classified people who work under the OSCE A classified bargaining agreement, any money that is budgeted but not spent for their health insurance in a given year is put into a pool, into a reserve fund, so that the following year, so we, at the end of June, we say this is what we didn't spend. We put that into this contingency so that when rates are announced in August, if they're, if rates have gone up, we can use some of that savings, some of that pool to help cover the costs so that there is no increase to them in their out-of-pocket for their premiums. It was very successful this year. Our classified staff have really, and I'm going to credit HR too, but have really done a good job of understanding their healthcare, understanding, and OEB, our Employee Benefits Board, has been very stable in its rate increases. So we actually did not need to tap into that pool in order to continue to cover their insurance. Our classified folks, again, have no out-of-pocket costs for their insurance because they're making really good choices, the plans that are being offered, we're able to cover under what we have budgeted for them. So we did not tap into that pool to cover their insurance this year. That cycle will start over here coming up June 30th. This year, we will look at it and say, this is what we budgeted for 1617, this is the amount we didn't spend, that will go into a contingency for 1718. In August, we'll get our rates from OEB and if we need to dip into that reserve to keep the hole, it's there, it's available for them. So that group only has made that arrangement and so far it's worked out pretty well. Now, insurance rates skyrocket, we could suck up all of this reserve, not have any left and they'll be paying out of pocket.
Is this a one-year rolled reserve or?
What, each year it starts out fresh, so it's not, it is not cumulative, right?
So we would reabsorb that each year, anything that's not used would be absorbed?
Right. We need to take that back, sorry.
And I would point out to the board too, we just received word actually that this year, the actual fund, when it all worked its way down, was not 180, it was actually 220. So it's actually about $50,000 or $40,000 higher than was estimated. So as we go into next year, we have a $220,000 reserve that is there looking, I mean, anticipating whatever changes come up in the future.
And just a reminder, we do have.
And we, yes, and we do have a re opener for insurance for this year, so we could have to end up negotiating higher cap, but because this pool has been pretty successful for them, and again, because those folks are making really good choices, they're well-informed, they understand their insurance and they're making good choices, we do have money in contingency to hold on to to be able to cover the costs. So that has been a very successful program.
Win-win.
Very win-win. And then below that, you'll notice our PRS reserve and we did, our $820,000, $1,000 that we have set aside, we'll be doing our PRS report to you here soon. I just wanted to double check a couple of things with our financial advisors before I present that, but it's looking like our costs will be much higher than $820,000 even in the coming year, let alone the coming biennium. So that reserve is a cushion for us, but not likely to cover the increases. Any other questions about that financial report?
Having no questions, then move on to the Budget Committee vacancies, Cece?
As noted in your board packet, we will have four vacancies this year and those zones correlate to your own zones. So you'll see that we have, you can notice whose terms are expiring and hopefully we'll get those advertised and get some folks to join us on the Budget Committee. If you have anybody who'd like to serve, we'd sure like to talk to them. If you have anybody who'd like to serve, we'd sure like to talk to them, I'll be glad to meet with them prior to their application. In this case, all they need to do is send a letter of interest to us, and that would go to Julie's office. And hopefully, we can get some folks in on that. Could be some very difficult decisions this year. You've heard the governor's budget was released in December, and the amount that is set aside for the state school fund is certainly less than we'd like to see, to be able to cover these costs, let alone with the bill increases and some of the new programs that we're required to have. So, Budget Committee will be really, a group that'll have an opportunity to really kind of dig into this a little bit. If we have to make tough decisions, that's where those decisions kind of start. So, would like to have some good folks on that. And.
Healthy and Safe Schools Plan.
Yes, so, and also in your packet, in October, I reported to you that we had a new requirement for the Oregon Department of Education to create what was called a Healthy and Safe Schools Plan. At that time, I presented a draft, and our finalized plan was submitted to ODE on December 29th, as required. And the plan covers certain things, certain environmental hazards, and in most cases, there actually have to be additional detailed plans covering these. So, the items as listed here, that we have to have detailed plans for are radon, that was a new plan that we were required to create, lead in drinking water, also a new plan, lead paint, remediation, or how we work with that, and then a couple of plans we've had on file for some time, our Integrated Health Management Plan, and the federal government also requires us to have an asbestos hazardy, hazard emergency response plan. So, this indicates where to find each of those, and then how we communicate about those. Some of these communication requirements are new, our lead in water testing, for example, that, the results of those tests need to be posted online and mailed to all of our staff within five days of receiving our results. We received the last of our results on those last weeks, though. I'm double-checking the information, and we will be sending all of that out, links to all of that, and getting that information out to the public. And these are just initial tests, a couple of our fixtures came back with higher levels, they are called actionable levels, so we'll be doing some retesting and things, but all that information is included in these plans. The valid thing is, I think the links have already changed, because we were in the midst of doing some work on our website, and I didn't really want to publish the plan until the links got corrected, but they just got done after I had to submit the plan. So, I'll be actually sending you an update of this, and when I send out an email to staff and board, it'll have the correct links. But that's what we're doing in the business office.
Any questions? If you have no questions, I'll move on to the Superintendent's Report. There's two items in the Superintendent's Report this month. First of all, our monthly report with regards to enrollment. I think if you look at the chart, the visuals that are provided, you'll see that total enrollment for the district at the beginning of the month, 3,286 students, which is up 45 from the previous year. Secondary-wise, we're at 864, which is about 27 of the students there, or 37 of the students are there. And elementary is 1522, so you've got about 8, or some of the students are. What you see, pretty much, is the, those visuals are very much the same as the years before them, so, but our history has been, continues to be our history. The first two pages you received, again, are the additions I made to the report, which shows you what we had projected and where we are at, and then the second page gives you a breakdown of the elementary grades for the last few months. You can see that in red is what the projection was. We projected to be at 3,273. We're at 3,286, we're off by 13 students. Excuse me, a majority of that really happens, eight of it came from the elementary school and 20 from the high school. We had a reduction at the middle school level from what we anticipated and what we had. But it gives you a breakdown by grade, so that you can see what we projected, what we have had, and what our history is for the year. Any questions with regards to enrollment? Hearing no questions there, I'll move on to our annual report of Division 22. Division 22 is the area that you have all of the requirements of the State of Oregon, which are the standards for public elementary and secondary schools. We have to review all those, report to the board, and then report to the Department of, Oregon Department of Education. Reviewing all of the issues on Division 22 standards, what we have is we noticed that we are in compliance in all of the areas with these notations. Notation number one is that in Area 1310, which is tag identification, we specifically of underrepresented populations, we're working to improve that area, and we're presenting a Plan 2ODE, which is the requirement that is presented with the Division 22 requirements. In Area 1430, it's the asbestos management plan, and that plan, which has been required federally, is now required at the state level, we're providing that to ODE. Area 1140, human sexuality education, with the changes that came in the legislature and the elections, the curriculum for K-12 has been purchased to bring us into compliance, and we're notifying the state of that. And Area 1640, instructional materials adoption, we are off, as everyone in the State of Oregon is, you know, they had that seven-year rotation of buying curriculum. We're off, just like the other districts, we advise them every year that we're off. And then 1650 is the postponement, the State of Oregon, we need to simply notify them that we're not purchasing necessarily the curriculum that's in their regular rotation. They came up with a rotation that has English, math, science, social studies, health, all on a seven-year basis, one in and out. And as the economy turned bad, those areas and that process became one that was not honored throughout the state. We are required to report to them when we're off pattern, we're off pattern, even though we purchased a sizable amount of curriculum last year, it's not exactly on track to the, I believe this year is science, and we purchased some science last year. So, I know that I'm looking at a science caravan that are coming by right now. And then the, other than that, Dory, that I believe that's the list, is it not?
That is correct. Just one thing to note, the health curriculum was purchased as K-5.
Right.
That we were in, you had said K-12.
Oh, I'm sorry, K-5, I apologize.
I just want to make sure that got corrected. We did not purchase K-12 health curriculum. Secondary is fine, it was in our elementary curriculum that we did not have the necessary materials.
So, we're filing a report with the State of Oregon that shows where we are in compliance and the adjustments we're making, and the areas that we need to make adjustments. Any questions on that? Okay, then, from that point in time, I'd like to move on, the, we do have the next board meeting, it's February 6th at 6:30. And I know that at the next board meeting, Chairman Love is going to talk about a public comment review, and it's possible he might share some things with you as to what that's going to be as it comes into the packet, but I know he would like to make that discussion. Are there other things that you'd like to add at this time, Steve?
Just to add on to that, what I'm going to, what perhaps is, adding some time during our public comments, to allow the board to interact with whoever comes to present us, just a couple minutes of basically clarification and some dialogue, and this is coming from a recommendation that the client made for me, and it's a process that the Corral School District has used, and it strikes me as something that, in the spirit of what we're trying to do overall with immersion and improve our communication, now would be a good time to adopt a change like that. But I do think it'd be worth waiting till next month to discuss it further. But that's basically what that topic is. And then the only other thing I have was, we do have a PLC meeting scheduled for January 30th, which is Monday later this month, so if we haven't talked about making any changes by June, that meeting is still calendared, and we'll be using that for some of our, some of our test scores, and going back and continuing our work on understanding where the focus areas need to be. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yep, that's all I have.
Do we have any scheduled meetings at this point on the superintendent search?
And I believe in, when we get into the business agenda, the question, Steve, was do we have any meetings about the superintendent search? And I believe when we get into the business agenda, then Mike and Greg will go over that. At this time, then, we move to our consent agenda. In the consent agenda, there are no personnel recommendations, but there are the minutes of last month's board meeting, and also the acceptance of the audit report presented by old Carla. At this point in time, facilitator would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda. It's been moved by Board Member Wall and seconded by Board Member Schinkel to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I would call for the vote. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please raise your right hand, or in the case of you, Steve, would you please acknowledge verbally?
Yes, I agree.
In that case, motion carries unanimously. Moving now to the business agenda and the report on the executive search, so I'd invite Mike Taylor and Greg McKenzie to. Did you say I'm boring? So, now you're saying them aloud, though. Okay, here you go. Yeah, I'll put it right here, I'll put it on the table, Steve, here you go.
So, Greg McKenzie, Mike Taylor, we just completed our tour of the district and meetings with various stakeholder groups to find out about what the expectations are for the staff, community, and students about the superintendent qualifications and criteria. So, tonight, we want to report to you what we discovered during our tour, and we have some action that we need to have you take to get us moving further forward in the search. We sent to you today through Julie something called the Search Activities Report, and that came today admittedly late, but we had our very last meeting only Thursday night of last week, so we had to pull this together pretty quickly to get it to you today. And then, oh, by the way, there's been some weather issues along the way, so, sorry for coming late, but better late than never. The Search Activities Report brings into focus what we learned from all of the various groups, and so I'm going to go through and highlight some things about the tour, and then Mike's going to talk to you a little bit about salaries, and then we need for you to take some action for us to move to the next step of the superintendent search. But Steve, can you hear me fine? Steve Love?
Yes.
So, there's a memorandum that summarizes how expensive the superintendent tour was for qualifications. We had about 11 meetings, and just short of 300 people attending those meetings. We had an online questionnaire going at the same time, and just short of 150 people responded there, so altogether, we had over 400 contacts with people in various stakeholder groups, so students, staff, and community, and administrators, teachers, classified. So, we thought that was a really good representation for a district this size, that's probably a little more than we typically would see, so we were pleased with that. Unfortunately for us, timing was a little bit of an issue, because we had some holidays in between, we had some weather interruptions along the way, and we got them in, but nonetheless, it took us a little while to squeeze them all in. We asked everybody a series of questions, what's really good about this district, what needs to be improved in this district, what are the priorities you ought to focus on for the next three to five years, and what are the profile characteristics of the superintendent person that we're looking for? And the questionnaire online had those same questions, as well as the face-to-face meetings and focus groups. What we did then was collect all of our notes from the focus groups, collected all of the information from the online questionnaires, and filtered it into those inside the system and those outside the system. So, we had two groups, one was the teachers certified, or teachers classified, administrators, and then the outside group were parents, community, and others, so that it gave us some perspective about if there was a difference between what different people with different set, different contexts had about the system. And to tell you how we do that, we've given you some examples. In this report, there's a spreadsheet that gives you a breakout of how each of the groups responded to the online questionnaire. We also had a list of all of the notes taken at the various focus group meetings, and then we did some analysis and sorting of that, so we could use it, and then laid it out side by side to see what the common themes were and the common messages that we thought we ought to pick up on behalf of the district. How we use that ultimately is, once you decide tonight what you want to adopt as qualifications, we will end up with creating a section called Who Are We?, a section of where do we need to go, and a section of the profile characteristics of the person who will get us from where we are to where we need to go. So, as we build the literature, what we were asking people was to give us the kind of information that would lead us to that kind of a result. So, in here, you can see a summary of where we went, who we talked to, and what they told us, and then after the memorandum about the tour, you will see a section called Consultant Recommendations. And so, if I could direct your attention to the section called Consultant Recommendations, this is a summary of our analysis of what we heard, both electronically online and in our face-to-face meetings. And as you can see, we sorted it into Who Are We?, Where Do We Need To Go?, and Who Do We Need To Get Us There? Now, a lot of boards don't realize that a lot of this has already been decided, because you have a Board Policy CBA, which is the first of the administrator policies that describes the job of the superintendent. So, we've included that in here for reference. And so, we took that Board Policy CBA, we took what we heard online, we took what we heard face-to-face, tossed it into a mixing bowl, stirred it up, and tried to find the common themes that would describe this district at this point now and what we're looking for in the search. And that's what you can see in the Consultant Recommendations. There is some level of analysis here based on what we heard. People described things a little bit differently, so we have to make some interpretation that a comment is very similar to another comment, as we're trying to put together some sort of common themes. But this is what we think the groups told us. We'll be the first to admit that if one of you were to do the same thing, you'd probably come up with something different. I'm going to guess it'd be 90, 95% of about the same, however, but it would probably have maybe a little bit different twist to it, but we don't. But we don't pretend that this is a statistically valid, scientifically, uh, established outcome. This is an analysis of what we heard. So you can see there that we've concluded that we were told that who are we as a community, it's two closely knit communities working together, for schools, uh, home of, uh, Western Oregon University. It's a culturally diverse and historic community. Uh, it's a community of multi-generational families. That is, they come here, they stay here, or they come here, go away, and come back here. But nonetheless, there's multiple generations here. It has a great location in its proximity to other major cities, so that you have access to Starbucks and Costco if you need it, or Target if it's not here, also the coast and the mountains. Both cities are small, but they're not too small, and there's a lot of outdoor recreational opportunities. Now, I'm not going to go through and read the entirety of what's in those consultant recommendations, but I, I did that just so you could see how we came up with what we came up with based on what we've heard. Uh, what's next for the district? You can see there that we've, uh, it was pretty universal, and I'll tell you it's pretty universal in almost every district we searched for, that lowering class sizes is number one, and it was here too. Continued efforts to provide more CTE and STEM courses, develop a long-range plan to update facilities and technology. I don't think that comes as any big surprise for anybody. Uh, retain highly qualified staff, assure that cultural diversity and equity are embraced throughout the system. And then again, you can read through all of those there. The next part on page two comes straight out of your board policy CBA, and it says, these are job-related requirements of the superintendent. One is that there will be a current administrator's license, have a master's degree or greater, preferably in educational administration, successful teaching experience, services superintendent or administrative experience in a central, uh, administration of the school system, or if we need to adopt or waive one of those requirements we can, which is also there. The next section also comes straight out of your adopted board policy CBA, which gives some of the professional qualities that should be sought in the next superintendent. And then the last two sections come purely out of what we heard during our tour. So we're going to propose to you tonight that this is what we believe the search has developed into so far. Ask if you have comments, questions, suggestions, or changes, or if you think we haven't accurately described the district, the community, what your needs or are, are the profile characteristics we're looking for, so that at the end of the night, we can have something that we can start building the literature from. So I'm going to pause right there, ask you for questions about the process of how we got to this consultant recommendation list, or are there suggestions or comments that you'd like to modify some of the items there? So open the floor for comments, questions, suggestions on qualifications.
I guess the first general question I would have is, in the, in, throughout this process, was there anything that was surprising to you as an outsider coming in and looking at this, comparing it maybe to other similar search, uh, tours that you've done?
I'll ask Mike that too, but I don't think so. What we find is, in every search, probably 75 or 80% of the people are looking for a great communicator or listener, they need updates in facilities and technology. There's certain things that are common, but then there's that extra 20% that are unique to this particular district or this particular search. And I think we found those unique characteristics so that we have a pretty good snapshot of who you are and what you need. I, I think it, I don't think there were surprises, but I think we did identify things that emerged that make you a little bit different than everybody else. I don't know, Mike, do you have anything to?
I think we find things, uh, I think I agree with Greg. We do find things that are unique. Obviously, you had an issue at the high school, so issues at the elementary school. You have a very, um, satisfied staff at the elementary levels. You have happy people there, um, just as a generality. Um, and, but, you know, the topic does come up a bit, our consistent leadership, that's not a surprise. Um, people, um, perceive that there is a cycle in the district, and that we, we go through this disruption of some sort periodically, and could we, could we figure out how to bridge those? A little bit unique, but not surprising. Um, I think other things are pretty consistent, class size, technology, little discussion around the bond. So part of your comments on communication, um, are, were generated by what, um, folks saw as, um, we didn't get the word out to folks on, on bond, and then follow that up with, and we still struggle with facilities. So no surprises, but those were the things that, that hone out as unique, uh, to, to this, uh, district. Your sense of relationship with the college is real positive for a college community. That isn't always the case with, with the college, nor do I think it's been the case here over a history of 25 or 30 years. So that is a, a uniqueness that is a real plus.
So as Mike was saying, that it reminded me of a couple of things, and I'm glad he mentioned the college. Also, uh, it came as a pleasant surprise, I think, at, at least to, to leave that. The two cities seem to work well together in support of the schools, because whenever we've had two-city searches, two-city districts that are doing search, that's not always the case. Sometimes they're in odds with each other. So there was a pleasant surprise about how well the two cities seem to support the schools together. So you become kind of the glue that pulls them together. And then the other thing was, there seemed to be a relatively strong sense of an emerging competency in cultural diversity. It's a work in progress, probably always is a work in progress, but nonetheless, it was recognized that I think that that was an emerging something the district has focused on and been working hard at. So I think that was a real pleasant surprise, too. Any other questions or comments? Any suggested changes?
I guess, uh, just a clarification again to, to, uh, hold on your experience in, in doing this more frequently than we do, is, uh, do you see anything in what you've recommended here that makes this search either more difficult or easier as we move forward?
Uh, generally, no. Um, you didn't have anything that just stands out and shouts problem, 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 which can be the case in some searches. So I think that you're well positioned as far as the search goes in that respect. I would also caution and give you a caveat. Even though we've made recommendations about language to use, it basically becomes a menu for us, because as we go forward in preparing documents and posting the job at various sites, we don't always get to use all of this. Sometimes we have a number of characters limitation, and, or I know a couple of sites where they say you can only use 2,000 characters. Well, trying to squeeze down the description of the district into 2,000 characters is a lot bigger chore than you realize. So, so this gives us the menu to work from, but you won't always find all of it at the same place at the same time. Any other comments or questions or suggested changes?
This, uh, requirement here says services superintendent or administrative experience in the central administration school system. Would that be like a assistant superintendent and that sort of thing?
Central office, could be a director of something, it could be an assistant superintendent, it could be somebody in district office. Uh, and those are requirements that are in your board policy, so they are what they are, but it would be someone such as that. Noting, however, the last item, which is also in your board policy, says if you find somebody that you really like, if Bill Gates comes down and says, I'd like this job and I'm bringing a hundred million dollars with me, you can waive all of those requirements and let Bill Gates take the job.
Can we take the money without him?
Any other comments or questions? So then I'm going to ask the board to, if they, well, first, there's a step that we need to go through before we ask you to adopt the qualifications. One is there's a requirement that you give the public an opportunity to comment about the criteria and the standards that you're going to use for the search. I could make a pretty strong case that us touring the district and having the online questionnaire meets that requirement, but we've always felt pretty good about also giving the public a chance at a public meeting if they choose to comment about qualifications and criteria and standards. So I'm going to ask the facilitator if he would open the floor to the public to see if they have any comments at this time.
At this time, I'm comfortable with opening the floor. Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment that they would like to make with regards to qualifications, uh, that has been talked about here by our search committee? There are none, uh, no one is looking to talk. I would suggest that the, Jerry?
Uh, could we maybe put this on the agenda for next month's board meeting and maybe advertise it? We would entertain public comments on superintendent?
I think that what they're looking for, Jerry, is an approval so they can begin the advertising in the next, would be in the middle of advertising by the time we get to next board meeting.
Okay. And, 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 absolutely correct. In fact, we need to go out of here tonight with some certainty of how much information we can go forward with starting the advertising and the brochure. And I will say that Julie and Adriana have been very helpful in getting the word out, both to the public and to, uh, the staff about coming to the meeting. So, uh, in fact, our very last meeting on Thursday night, the newspaper reporter was there, and she had said she had been publishing it in the newspaper as well, and the reason she came to the last community meeting was because they had been publishing it in the local newspaper. So I'm not sure that we get any more comment or attendance by having this at another meeting.
Understanding that timeframe, I would ask if there is a motion, facilitator would entertain a motion from the board to accept the qualifications as we have reviewed them, uh, here at this evening's meeting?
I saw moved.
It's been moved. I would look for a second. It's been moved by Board Member Schingle, Schinkel, sorry, Jerry. Seconded by Board Member Milligan to accept the qualifications as submitted by the, uh, team here today. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I would call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And I would ask Chairman Love if he would acknowledge verbally, please.
Yes, I approve.
At this point, the motion carries unanimously.
He said yes, I approve.
Right, I heard him.
Okay. Steve, we also need to talk with you a little bit about proposed salary range for the position, so Mike's going to talk you, talk you through that.
Last time, we presented for you, and again, in your packet, uh, there is the salary comparison. You'll see in our recommendations that we've recommended the salary range between 127,000 and 137,000, uh, which would put you, um, just above the, just, uh, just above the current average in mean, but, uh, remember that, um, that is based upon last year's salary, and you're determining a salary for next year. So you're two years away from that. But, uh, looking at what's out there and what things are looking like now, 127 to 137 is our recommendation.
Did, did you, uh, look at all that other jobs that are currently posted? I don't know if they're comparable at all, but is that in the ballpark?
Yeah. So, uh, I probably have a little more information about that. As far as districts this size that are posted, I think we're doing the searches for them. Ashland is comparable in size to you, and they've gone with 140 to 155, but you'll notice on here that they're the higher end of the range anyway. I don't know what the range proposed is for Madras or Jefferson County, uh, because OSBA is doing that search, but there aren't many your size in the market right now. So that's the only information we have about other districts at this time.
Other questions by board members? There are no further questions. The facilitator would entertain a motion to approve the salary range that has been recommended by the search committee?
I approve.
It's been, it's been moved by Board Member Milligan and seconded by Board Member Schinkel to accept the salary range as presented. Do I have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I would call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And Chairman Love, if you would acknowledge, please verbally.
Did you hear that, Steve?
Yeah.
You vote for Chairman Love?
He said yes.
I heard it said for him. Then it's approved unanimously.
So, so one last thing that I wanted to share with you, I think that covers what we needed to cover, doesn't it? Salary, qualifications, open comment to the public. Did we miss anything, Julie, that's on the agenda?
No.
Screening committee.
Okay, oh, screening committee, okay. Uh, so before I get to screening committee, tonight, we've handed out to you in a ivory covered document, those comments that came in online, uh, and the notes that we took during the focus group sessions that we used as, that the part of the basis, along with that spreadsheet in the report, to come up with what we did for qualifications. We give this to you for your reading pleasure, and with a couple of caveats. The caveats are, remember that each comment is one comment by one person, and there's probably hundreds of them, so you have to be cautious not to focus on one or the other. We have redacted a couple of things. Our policy is if a staff member is mentioned, or if a job title that only has one person in that job is mentioned, we will redact that because it's not fair to mention somebody's name when they didn't give permission for their name to be used. Remember, this is online comments that come in where people think that it's anonymous because it's like a blog and they can say whatever they want to. Fortunately for you, there were very, very few of those. Sometimes you can find 25% of the page redacted in some of these searches, so. Uh, so anyway, this is for you just to see, this becomes more of a planning tool for the new superintendent, along with that Excel spreadsheet, because the new superintendent can then go back and look to see what people were thinking when the search began. And so during the summer, it becomes a very valuable tool for that sort of purpose. The last thing I want to talk about is the screening committee. We will be working with Julie and Adriana to pull together the documents that we need to start advertising and publishing. And Steve or Love will probably be, be running them by you, so you can take a look at them to make sure that you're okay with them before we send them out. But the other thing we need to have the board working on is coming up with a group of people to help you review applications. We call it the screening committee. Now, all of the board members will be looking at the applications at the same time, but we think it's a good idea to have somewhere between 12 to 15 to 16, maybe even as many as 20, extra eyes and ears looking at the application with you. And we encourage you to consider making sure that there's good representation from the various stakeholder groups, such as administrators, teachers, classified, and community. We've made some suggestions in that, uh, search activities report about how you might make that or sort that out. We encourage you to think about a couple of things. One is, these people will probably spend six or eight hours total time over a two- or three-day period looking at applications, so it is a relatively large time commitment in a short amount of time. That will happen in February, February 22nd to February 25th. We also would, uh, encourage you to, don't make it a complicated process to select them. We found it to be very efficient if you just go to your teachers' union and say, give me four, and let the union come up. And let the union come up with four people who will represent teachers. Go to your classified union and say, "Give me three." And I just use those as examples. But they can give you a list of people who have the available time and willingness to do it and review applications. Go to your administrators and say, "Give me two." But don't, don't wrestle with the need for you to come up with, you know, fifteen extra people to look at the applications. Let others do that for you. For the community part, however, it might be a good idea for the board to get those people or those, or those names. And like I said, don't make it complicated. Don't create an application process where they have to submit applications and you interview them. That just gets to be way beyond the amount of time you need to spend on it. You're gonna spend enough time doing application reviews and interviews later on anyway, so make it simple. And I would think that by your next meeting in, by your February sixth meeting, we would need to have that information. So we can communicate with the screeners. We'll take it from there. We will give them instructions. We will come into the screening activity on February twenty-second with everything that people need. If you have a pack, a packet to work with, they'll have the applications, but we'll just take care of all of it. But we need names and email addresses of the people who are going to be on the committee. So one thing I would ask, maybe talk about tonight is, how many people do you think would be a good representative group? We've given you some samples in here, but talk to us about what you think about having others review the applications with you.
Generally speaking, more to marry or up to the point words on wheelie. And so your experience there would, would set the limits for it, somewhere between fifteen and twenty people, I would guess.
Right. Yeah, you hit the nail right on the head there. If you give us forty people, it just becomes a logistics nightmare and we don't get any better results out of it. So if we have good cross-sectional representation for the various stakeholder groups, that's what we're looking for. And if you only get two from a group, that's okay. If you get three or four from a group, that's okay too. But at least it's got representation for the group. And the key groups are teachers, classified, administrators and community.
I guess the only other part I had is from the community, my, my first thinking would be?
The great Steve, I don't know if you're, that's right here, the entire room, but I think you can reach about fifteen. About my district, I've been approached by four people already out of holiday from Ashtray. We've got a member, Tim Sodell, would be one of our administrators, principal, and he has, has Morello from the high school. And, and then Dave Klein from City of the Independent. And I, you know, I think all those would make sense, depending upon how much interest or how many other people that we get. So we've, we've already got a start there, four people. And, guys, I think your recommendation is just how to go out and take a lot of tests. And I think total five is for high school, five to twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. One thing that I will look at third audit with people here, the third people, I mean, committee, I try to make it clear that, you know, as part of the screening process, the board will be the one to really go through the interview process and make a decision. Can you remind me, do we have a document or a description of what the role of the screening committee in your original proposal?
Not in the original proposal, but when we get the names and the contact information, we will take it from there. We will give them instructions and what they're supposed to do. And describe it in much the terms that you just described, which is, it's the board's decision, but we're looking for extra eyes and ears to recommend and suggest who might be in the unit. So we have not published that yet, but it's a part of what we will publish as soon as we get names and email addresses.
So I, I didn't hear the beginning of Steve's comments about, he suggested several names, but I wasn't, I'm not sure where those came from.
He said some people had contacted him. I believe he mentioned four. And I would encourage you, each of you, if you get someone that is interested, just turn their names over to Julie and she'll accumulate them. And you can see then how they sort out because if those people are willing, then we have to give them serious consideration. Steve also said that he thought it was a good idea just to reach out to those other groups and let them suggest or nominate people to fill the positions. And he then said about fifteen was about the right number.
I guess the comment I was starting to make was that I think we need to be a little sensitive to picking the community members and not necessarily pick members that have always been involved with school stuff. So, you know, for instance, going to our bond exploration committee and saying, "How about you guys?" I think it's a bad idea. I think that some fresh eyes would be good, both for their comments, but also for a representation of the broader community.
So there is no requirement, as far as I'm aware, in statute or in board policy about how to do this, so you're kind of on your own. That's why I suggest keep it simple. Don't get too complicated about it. And if you come up with names, collect them in one place. I suggest Julie because she's a good collection point for information. We've been telling groups as we've gone around, if they were interested, to give their names to Julie so she could, could collect them. And we're just gonna turn that over to you. All we need from you is give us a list of around fifteen names of people that meet those descriptions and then we'll take it from there. If you give us thirty, we're gonna complain, moan, whine, tell you we don't need that many. But if you give us, you know, six or eight, it's probably enough.
So can the district office do the first three of?
First three?
Talk to, well, get to administrators and talk to the?
We certainly will address it with the associations and, and, yes.
It basically comes down to the community as the area where the board can help.
Certainly, yeah.
And if board members have a suggestion of someone they know would be good, you might check with them if they're willing. And if they are willing, then just give their names over to Julie. And it doesn't have to be exactly fifteen, if it's sixteen or eighteen, it's okay. Other questions or comments?
Should clarify that, just to clarify an expectation for that committee. Right now, we're scheduled to gather on Wednesday the twenty-second. That's pretty much a mandatory gathering because we go over how to, to have the applications, what the process is. Then depending on the number of applications that you have and the number of people reading, we'll need to determine how long we leave that time open for folks to read and when they're going to come back. And we don't have to have the whole group come back generally with the results of that screening. We put it into a matrix for you. We bring it back to you. And then there's a board discussion. Generally, the board can take additional comments or notes or things from the screening committee. The, the initial training session is usually two to two and a half hours and people get started screening. Then you need six or eight hours stretched out over a couple of days for folks to do the screening. And then you need another, anywhere a minimum of an hour, but more like two hours to do the review process of the screening and make your selection. So whether you do that Friday night, Saturday, or put it off till Monday, you'll wanna look at your schedule. You had inquired about the next meeting. And generally, that's something that your committee participants will want to know. So you may think about how, how to do that. Doing it on Friday night generally is probably a pretty tight schedule. Doing it on Saturday has its own issues. So Monday night, the twenty-seventh may be your, your opportunity. But you will wanna look at that and be sure that that's locked in as you appoint your committee. One last thing, if I may. I know that board member asked, are there any meetings between now and the next board meeting for the board members as far as search is concerned?
The next search type, search-related meeting will be on February twenty-second.
Just wanted to get that information for you.
February twenty-second, which is the mandatory start meeting for reviewing applications Mike talked about. We do need for you to think about names to give us for the screening committee, but there's no, we don't come back and report to you. And just a, just a little bit of a heads up, during the course of, of, the course of advertising the position, we will not be telling you how many applications we have at any point in time, period.
You can't call you every day.
You can, but you still will not get the answer. And the reason is because in this world, the first two or three days, we usually get a handful. In fact, I've already got several people who are itching to file their applications for this job, so that's the good news. But then there's this huge gap and nobody else applies until two days before closing. So if I were to tell you, you have five, everybody's gonna get depressed. But the fact is, two days before closing, we might get twenty. And so if I tell you twenty, then you're gonna be euphoric and that's not gonna be right either, so we just don't tell you.
Just a clarification on that schedule and that second meeting. On the schedule we approved, it shows a February twenty-second screening training and then a twenty-seventh screening debrief with a review of applications in between. Is that good?
That's, that works well.
Okay, so I'm guessing proceed with that once we decide something different.
Other comments and questions?
Good. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
All right.
Steve?
Well, I just wanted to find out, under this agenda item, what suggested motions of the three of them? We've only had two. We need to do a motion to?
The third, I believe, was for the screening committee, which we are not prepared to make any motions at this time.
Yeah, a discussion is fine on that topic. So I think we have the business taken care of that we need.
The thirtieth of January is the PLC.
Steve, love, did you have any additional questions?
I got it. Thank you very much for talking aside.
That's six. Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes. Okay, that moves us into comments from individual board members. Do we have any comments from any board members?
Just a quick, just a quick thank you to Steve for working through the audit process. I know how much fun that is.
She's just, she's just a pleasure to be with the entire time.
Yes, my colleagues will tell you, I'm always happy when it's over.
Yes, we are.
My husband will tell you, we actually have a year's eat this year, which we did not last year.
Do you have a comment from anyone else? Hearing none, we urge her.